I call to our finance committee, the first item is accept accepted in the state DOT chip funding, Mr. Waller.
He's actually coming right now. I have that strategic seat here. So, he says he watches.
You missed this one.
Yes, early. I watch 32 on here.
4:27.
5:28.
Oh, okay. So, what's that iPad?
First item, accepting money from the New York State DOT or ex-state. This is our chips money. We get it an annual allocation every year. Sometimes it varies depending on the state budget. This year, we are getting standard chips program along with extreme winter recovery, POP, which is Pay Our Potholes, Pay New York, and the state touring. The total of all funding sources is $4.8 million and no change. This is the largest allocation that we've gotten. The biggest note is the state touring money, which this year was around $2 million. That is a new allocation in the budget for the last couple of years and is not guaranteed in the future. So, you know, I don't know if they take it away, what's gonna happen. I'm sure once you give someone misvalued all of the state money like that, it's gonna be harder to take it away. But I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that was a new allocation about three years ago, which is why our tolls are so high.
Questions? We have a motion. All in favor? Thank you. The next item is Sam Grant for Woodlawn Preserve.
This is a state grant administered by DASNY. This was, I believe, both of these grants were through Stech's office. Sorry, just took me a second. This particular grant, we needed some money to do some re-establishment in the Woodlawn Preserve for Habitat, and they had a municipality who will remain nameless that was not active on the list of using this money. So, it was reallocated to us as we had a need. We will be using this to do some stump work, which we've already awarded, and we're also going to be using it to do some preservation creation for the lupin, hopefully with the carnival butterfly, then some trail maintenance, and some work all in the preserve. So, this is to, the agreement has been signed, but we have to accept the money. Finance won't move unless we accept the money. So, that's what this is for.
Any question? All in favor? The next item is Sam Grant for Central Park Greenhouse.
Yep, so the Friends of the Greenhouse, working in cooperation with Cornell Cooperative, they applied for and received a Sam Grant through Stech's office for $125,000. They originally wanted to use it for a pavilion and to use it as a pavilion area. However, they decided that it would be better served to their mission statement if they remove the existing greenhouse number four and install a new greenhouse, which they're calling a teaching greenhouse. The current greenhouses are not large enough to hold classes and work on tables, so this new greenhouse would allow them to do more teaching and educational events.
Questions? All in favor? Thank you. The next item is authorization to enter a contract with this community action program for rental assistance utilizing CDV-GV.
Good evening, everybody. We are looking to allocate some of our unspent CDV-GCV funding towards rental assistance with SCAP. We know that with the ERAP funding kind of ending and some of the ESGCV funds that we've allocated for rental assistance have been spent and there really, there's a gap right now in terms of funding available for rental assistance. So, we're just requesting to allocate this funding for that purpose. SCAP also wrote up a narrative of some of the issues and challenges that they're facing and trying to solve. We think it's a good use of the funding and also in line with what our plan was for CDV-GV in terms of neighborhood stabilization. So, we're just looking for, to authorize the mayor to enter a contract with SCAP for them not to exceed now of $200,000 for rental assistance.
Questions?
Thank you. So, SCAP will be actually paying rent that's in their arrears?
Yes.
Do they have, I don't see the exact guidelines. Do you know like how many months, is there, you know, how that'll work?
Usually, it's a three-month, yeah, they have, we could send you their program guidelines if that's something you want to see. I don't know all the details, but I know typically it's a three-month period, but with the CV money, I think it can be up to six months.
Okay. Yeah, because people have asked about, you know, how this program's gonna work because I said, you got other requests for legislation to do something kind of similar. So, I just want to know how this program worked and, you know, and maybe have an idea of how many household, I think they did say how many households, 52?
Yep.
And so, how long this money would actually last and would it need to?
So, it's not, it's not gonna be a new program. It's actually, it's just gonna be building on what they're already doing for rental assistance, but it's just providing some more funding for it. So, it's not a new program. It's in line with what they've been doing and, and, you know, the guidelines would remain pretty much the same.
But I just want to get a sense of how long this money would last, this particular time.
Right, yeah, yeah. And I, I don't, like I said, I don't know all the details, but I do think that they were, they were estimating that right now, you know, they, they could be spending up to $100,000 per month in rental assistance. So, I don't want to, you can get the details, but that's what I've been, you know, what our discussions have reflected. So, definitely high need.
Yes, it'd be definitely great to have the details. Thank you.
Go ahead, please. Hi, Ms. Diaw. Thank you for your identification of this program and just how I can fill this need that is so vast within our community. Based on your conversations with the SCAP, would you say that this $200,000 fully meets the gaps that have been identified or where are this?
No. I don't think there's any amount of money that can probably fully meet the gaps with, you know, as we all know, after the eviction warrant lifted and just everything that has come with that, there is a need that we definitely can't meet on our own. You know, we do have access to some other funding, but we're trying to be a partner in making sure that we're doing what we can. And because we have the CV funding available and we need to spend that down as well, it's, I think it's just a great use for it.
And then, a follow-up question, would it be appropriate then in getting your recommendation for us to potentially look at evaluating applying some ARBA funds to help fill that gap as well?
I think that would probably take some review and would be, you know, discussion to consider with the mayor and council.
Thank you.
So, I think that this is great. I think that there's a clarity within the community, so I'm fully supportive of that. My question is, to your limited scope, go through your conversation with SCAP, are they gonna like, do you know that, is there anybody that they can take this money, kind of leverage it to maybe apply for more of the grant money?
Yes, I do, that is what, you know, I know that they do that with all the funding we provide and they get, you know, and there's different ways it can be leveraged and they're always really good about, you know, not having a sole source, but trying to, you know, build out a plan that leverages the funding they receive.
Because I think it's good for people to know that if we're talking about 200 grand and it's such a great need that this money will be leveraged, hopefully to pull more to meet that need and, you know, hopefully that.
Right, and hopefully, you know, the state will also come out with some more resources being made available for the purpose because it is definitely a high need.
Thank you.
I thought I heard Donna Reddy who said that ERAP was going to open back off.
That, uncertain, but it's possible, yeah. Right now, it's closed.
Right, absolutely.
But, you know, it may, yeah, I think, like I said, I think the state is going to have to do something, whether it's ERAP or another source. I could see that happening, yeah.
Go ahead, please.
In terms of the guidelines of SCAP, and if you don't know, if you could find out, so if there's individuals who, whose income didn't change, but because there was legislation saying they didn't have to pay their rent and therefore didn't, do they have guidelines to look at that to make sure that anyone who, whose income remained the same but still got behind because they just didn't pay, I mean, do they, would they be able to have access to this as well?
I would imagine that in their intake process, they would collect that, that kind of documentation.
That's important. I mean, if people had the ability but simply didn't do it, then, you know, this should really be for people who just didn't have the means because they, the loss of income or whatever the case was.
Yeah.
So, I would like to know specifically.
I mean, at the end of the day, I think it's related directly to homeless prevention. So, and I don't want to speak for SCAP, but I would think if that were the case, but someone's still facing homelessness because now they don't have a place to live, it would apply, you know, and I'm not sure exactly how they, they'd be through those things, but if someone's facing homelessness, they're facing homelessness. It's my understanding.
I think we should consider like prioritizing people who did it, so we can talk about that, but if you can find that, thank you.
Well, Madam President, do you want that as a condition on the money?
Well, I would certainly like to take a look at it, mayor, because, you know, there's people who by no, you know.
I understand. I agree with what you're saying. I'm just wondering if you want that in there. I'd like this to move ahead and some of the review might take a longer period of time. So, if it was, the condition was that this is going to go to individuals who income is adversely affected because of COVID, whatever, as opposed to people who may have made, I'll call it, poor choices in terms of managing their resources, just put it in the resolution going forward as opposed to holding it up for additional review?
Well, I would definitely say that, for me, that needs to be a priority.
I would say, you know, once this gets approved, then we still have to do the contract with SCAP and come up with the agreement. So, I think that there is an opportunity to, you know, to include, you know, the things that, that the council and the mayor would like in the, in the agreement moving forward, but.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not trying to micromanage SCAP. I think they have the expertise, the years of working with this population. I think that, you know, they've done an amazing job for decades, I think. I can't be specific about that, but, you know, I think that if we give them the money, I think what we're saying is we trust your background, we trust what you've been doing in our community to help especially the most vulnerable population that's facing homelessness and eviction. So, I just want to caution against putting too many restrictions on the funding moving forward. And I know that's my nonprofit hat sitting on my shoulders, but, you know.
I appreciate that, that comment. I think that, you know, they're the ones who are kind of boots on the ground dealing with these issues and they understand the things, but, you know, certainly if there is a prior prioritization, we would also just have to make sure that ethically they can implement that and it would be, you know, something to discuss.
Let me just be clear. I don't, first of all, this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing, COVID is, and I don't think we're micromanaging, but as funders, we do get to say that our money should be spent in the best way possible in the people. Their income didn't change and they didn't pay the rent. I think that the people whose income did change should be on the top of the list to make sure that they get the help. Ms. Diaw has already said there's way more people out there than even money, so we should be prioritizing those by who by no fault of their own were not able to meet their obligations.
I hear what you're saying. I don't know if you had your hand up. I hear what you're saying, but I just again want to emphasize that, you know, I really trust the work that you're doing and I think that they probably do have those kinds of priorities, et cetera, that they face on a day-to-day basis, so.
I just want to go for fact.
I was just gonna add, it seems like, again, it's another situation of yes and, all right? So, we look at whatever parameters that SCAP has existing, and if those existing parameters don't satisfy that area due to this being COVID, then we can, you know, talk with them about, about that language, but I'm pretty sure that everyone would agree that we want to impact the people with the highest need, and I think that's kind of part of that. So, if we do that, there's a way to look at their existing process, and I'm sure that they had made some adjustments due to COVID as well. If not, we could just say, hey, you know, we want to make sure, how do we ensure that this is, we're using this to really impact the people the most, even I think everyone would be talking kind of the same language when it comes to that.
And then, as a point of reference, always common council, when they pass similar legislation, does need money for this population need, they did apply a certain number of restrictions. So, it's not anything that we're doing that's uncommon. I definitely understand Council President Porterfield's position, and I think as long as we do that collaboratively, so we make sure that we're meeting our needs as a council, but also adhering to their functionality, I think it is something that we can do and streamline that without affecting the people that need the money.
One final point. I just do want to say that we also did give them funding for homeless, for COVID support for homeless people during the ARCA discussion, so I just wanted to remind everybody about that as well.
Any other common concerns? Mayor have a motion to move this?
What are we moving?
We're moving to fund SCAP.
Okay, but with the provisions, without the provisions?
Are you gonna wait, Ms. Diaw is gonna provide the documents you requested?
No, so while I'm asking, I'm not necessarily asking for those documents, but I want us to be able to have those priorities in our contract that we say we'd like it prioritized in this way. Is that possible?
You can put whatever, yeah, you can put those prescriptions. Can you just be explicit with what it's gonna be subject to in terms where, you know, I don't want to take words out of, you know, the mouths of any of the council people, if there are terms that you're gonna require in there outside of what's being proposed coming from the Development Department and Mayor's Office on this, I just would like you to just obviously be, you know, tell me exactly what it's gonna be subject to.
So, it doesn't seem like that would hold this up at all. It seems like we can, we could move forward with this and then at the appropriate time where, you know, there could be some added language if need be, because there might be language in this existing.
You gotta tell me what criteria is gonna be in the contract in this resolution to go forward.
So, what I would like to see in the resolution is that they prior, I'm not saying that other people can't benefit, but the priority be to those who face, are facing homelessness because their loss of income or whatever it was and by no fault of their own, and those whose income didn't change, they would be their priority, well, I won't say they wouldn't get help at all, but the priority would be to those who had loss of income or facing homelessness as a result of that, and there was no change in their income and ability to pay, and that's what's causing this.
Yeah, I'll wait, I'll wait for a response from, I understand what you're saying. I think the population we're talking about is all extremely low income, so even if they didn't have a change in income, they're still extremely low income. But I hear what you're saying, yeah.
I mean, the fact is, there's some people who I've heard said, you know, didn't have to pay rent, didn't pay rent because they didn't have to pay the rent, not because they didn't have the ability to pay rent. So, that's not an anecdote.
I'm not sure, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but again, I'm sorry, but I just don't think that SCAP, I mean, I really trust that SCAP is, SCAP's expertise, Ms. Diaw and her staff's expertise in working with them. I would, I would not want to vote for something that would put additional restrictions in, but I know that will happen next week, so I don't, I'm not on this committee.
So, move it with the understanding to add those to, those language?
I know, some people are extremely opposed, I'm not. I think that we should be, we should be helping people that, that really need the help in the, in this situation by no fault of their own. That's how I see this.
Who's calling if you're applying? What, you made a proposal with the government?
Subject to, so authorizing this agreement, subject to placing language within the agreement stating that the funding will be prioritized for people who are facing homelessness due to loss of income, not with, due to no fault of their own. That's essentially what I've gathered from that.
Again, is it any fault of their own that inflation has, has increased prices of everything around us? I mean, I just feel like that's a very, I don't know how we make those judgment calls or do I think that I want to make that judgment call?
The challenge, if I may, I think the challenge will be, while certainly the intent from the council or members of the council is there, when SCAP is dealing with somebody, they're now having to make that determination on whether or not the, this is somebody's fault or not somebody's fault when using these. fault or not somebody's fault when using these resources. And obviously, I think there may be a level of subjectivity on whether or not somebody is responsible for their circumstances. So I think there is, there may be some difficulty in their operations in determining who gets the funds and who doesn't, because, you know, everybody's going to have a story when they come in.
So I think where we might be getting hung up is not around the language of fault of their own. I think that if, that if we are, the language that we are going to prioritize, people who have had loss of income and facing homelessness, I think that I would imagine that that's probably really in line with what SCAP is doing anyway and sufficient enough language that, and therefore that would get you out, you know, out of that place, I think, that you're talking about now, where you're like, never being really.
Yeah, we can take that loss of their own.
Where we're making those judgment calls. But I think that the intention is just prioritize people who need it the most due to loss of income.
Loss of, that's, that's fine.
So you want to remove that part?
It doesn't have to be fault of their own.
Subject to prioritizing the funds for people who are facing homelessness due to loss of income during COVID. Is that?
However, Ms. Patrick, that doesn't.
Satisfy her.
Again, I'm not on this subcommittee. I just stand with what I've, what I've previously said. And I just really know that population is, you know.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I think if I were to reach out and get some comment from SCAP that might resolve the issue, we know more specifically what is happening, but.
So are we moving forward with that language?
I understand Ms. Porterfield's point. I actually agree with her. The problem I have is how do you prove a loss of income in a lot of ways? I mean, some people will be able to do it, other people won't. And if we're waiting for SCAP's information, why not just move it forward as is? And just move forward, because apparently they have some sort of guidelines.
And I'd like to make sure that the guidelines are including that, and I would love to have seen them today. You know, but I didn't ask for that. I didn't ask for that. But just because it's, it's, I don't know how many of you, I mean, I just know that it's happening, but there are people who just landlords have been complaining that people have not lost their income and are still not paying the rent. We've heard from the landlords. So I just want to make sure that as we're helping people, we're helping those in prioritaries and those who are not in that situation. If you've ever been to any landlord meetings, you hear it all the time.
Yeah, but this program that SCAP is running, I mean, because they've been doing this for years. Rental assistance. So at least they have something in place to carry on this program.
Yeah, they've just.
Yeah, they've been doing it over here. We've been funding it.
I don't doubt that, but I just want to make sure that people who didn't, who didn't pay the rent because they don't want to, aren't the ones that.
They should have guidelines in place. They've been doing it, yes. So we can, we can get a copy of the guidelines or how they go about doing it for us.
But I.
But within another two weeks.
Yeah.
Before it comes back, the mayor said, let's put this money out there, contract signed, whatever, they've been doing it, we've been funding it for a long time. Let's see what, but let's just pass it as it is without any restrictions on the money at this point.
There's restrictions on the money. They have restrictions.
There are restrictions on the guidelines.
Without our restrictions.
So it seems like we could potentially move forward right now, getting it out of committee as it is right now and explore what guidelines that SCAP has existing. So those two things can happen, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it seems like we're.
I have one other question. So if, if SCAP doesn't have the guidelines, then if SCAP doesn't say, if that's not part of it, that's my question to the council, actually, not Ms. Diott.
I guess you'd vote against it next week, giving them the funding. Oh, you're not on the committee, right?
I'm just asking a question.
No, we can move to add guidelines. If they're not, and I doubt whether they will be now.
I'm sorry?
I doubt whether they will be. No, they, they should have guidelines. I think we can use the same guidelines that they have currently to administer this funding.
So my question is, if they don't have the guidelines saying that there was no, you know, a person didn't pay rent just because they didn't pay rent, because you can find that information out from the landlord or from wherever, you know, they're not having homelessness anymore, what do we do? That's my question.
Well, would the council move this ahead? Ms. Diott could check tomorrow to see what the criteria is and their general conformity on that. Headed ready to go for next Monday night?
As long as the, as long as that's there. That's, that's just my concern. Heard from the landlords, been to all their meetings about how people are not paying their rent and have the ability. So just want to make sure the people who don't pay the rent because they couldn't, make sure they get the benefit from this.
Mr. Colton?
If I can make a suggestion, moving ahead as it was presented tonight, subject to obviously receiving, you know, the guidelines that they have already set up, and if they are not the guidelines that the council generally agrees with, obviously you can, you know, at the time of the resolution or the time you vote on it, then if the language isn't there, you can always, you know, make an amendment to the resolution to add language that the council generally would be comfortable with. And again, hopefully we don't get to that point. Hopefully those guidelines that SCAP follows are going to, you know, be amenable with council.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, thank you. The next item is authorization to enter a contract with Connected E Company to our training agency for summer youth employment. Ms. Diott?
So this is related to the youth employment piece of the Tree Collaborative Program, planning to move forward again. Goal is to plant 100 trees. Recently, we moved forward the portion for the project management. This is for the youth employment piece with SJTA. So it's for our contract with them to employ the youth for the program.
Questions? Concerned? They have a motion? All in favor? Aye. The next item is follow up ARPA contract with Porterfield. And then, Ms. Diott?
So yeah, I asked the reasons we put that on the agenda. We haven't talked about in several months to see where we are with the contracts, how much money has been expended, not just allocated but actually spent. So I ask for it from, we have, everyone should have information from the finance department and then Ms. Diott can just tell us where the contracts are at this point.
Yeah, so we've executed three of the contracts that we have for the development projects specifically. The other, there's, there's four more that are kind of in the final stages of just, you know, negotiations with BCNI and for Seat Center and for this Connected E Foundation. The remaining projects, we're still waiting for the pre-contract requirements to be met, so for people to actually submit the documentation they need to go to contract. And then there are other ones where we have gotten no response. I think the Aquatic Center is one. So I mean, you know, I'm not, I wasn't going to go through line by line, but essentially we've executed three contracts. We have four that are pretty much ready to go. And then the remaining is either has contingencies or we're waiting on the pre-contract requirements. We have had communication with most of the projects, you know, in response to the pre-contract questions and things like that. So it's been ongoing communication, but we're just waiting for those, those items to be able to move forward.
Which three contracts have been had or executed?
The YWCA for their critical capital needs, Safe Inc. for Safe House, and Bethesda House of Connected E for the Care House Support Housing. And those were three that were kind of critical needs as well, so. So it's good that they have been, been executed.
Anybody else have questions?
Could we get a listing of the contracts that have not provided any responses to you?
Yep.
The only reason why I'd like that is I think we should be proactive with money left to turn back and try to identify additional needs which improve new projects for consideration, or how do we triage what has already been submitted?
So I know that Greenmark in particular says that they'd sent their information in. So is there like a timeframe when they can expect that or if you have more off the top of your head?
I don't believe that they submitted their information, as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
So that it would be kind of a specific discussion that I don't know if it's appropriate.
Sure. And so, but like you said, so the boss force and all that is not included in what you're talking about?
No, those are more of the city, you know, the city projects.
So all the things up here, like the empowerment program, none of that, would be included in what you're, in terms of that? That's all city stuff?
Yes. The city stuff is not, we're not overseeing.
Okay. And then, yeah, Ms. for bringing this forward, I'm sure that you may, I'm not sure, but I mean, may have heard, I had a conversation with Mr. Ferrari last week, that there was some conversation that the federal government might be trying to claw back some money if money wasn't spent from not just Connected E but other, other municipalities. So I just want to make sure that we're like being on top of making sure the money's allocated and spent so that that doesn't apply to us. He didn't give us the specific guidelines, maybe Derek knows those, I don't know, but I just wanted to, you know, let everyone know that that's happening and that's at least been a conversation. So we don't want that to happen. We never want to give back grant money or have it taken back from you. So, so we really should be like moving ahead. And also, I guess this is really a question for the mayor in terms of will we be able to hire a consultant to help oversee some of these, these projects? I know that we discussed it like months ago, we said that that was in the works.
Can we continue to review it? At this point, we've not hired anybody, but we're still moving through the process of getting the contracts in place and then being able to administer them going forward.
So when we, I know that we also losing somebody from development. So is that something we can do, you know, more quickly? I know that he's been really involved with, with doing this, so it seems like Dan City. Okay. So that seems like it's like more of a critical need now that we're losing another person.
Again, in a conversation with Mr. Ferrari, he said that he would be able to manage this in the short term. Continue to do ongoing recruitment and move forward in this process of getting the contracts in place.
And so I guess in, in terms of writing the contracts, is that coming out of the law department? Or is that?
Law department has drafted a contract that can be used for all of the projects involving outside agencies. We're working though with development when they have to be, you know, I think tailored to the particular project. So I know we've been working with Ms. Diott and Mr. Gray in terms of doing that fine tailoring.
So does that mean you provided them a template and they're just filling in the blanks?
We provided them with a template and they've then asked questions about, you know, if, if something has to be tailored for a particular project or particular agency, we then stepped in to provide assistance. And then we review it before it gets finalized for the mayor.
So how, I guess, Ms., how, how is, I know, how is it in terms of your office able to be able to generate all of this stuff? It's, I mean, if it's uncomfortable to talk about publicly, let me know, but.
I mean, you know, we just have to come up with the program and what the guidelines are and just all of the details, and that takes time. You know, I think it takes time with any contract that we do because of all the stimulus funding, yeah, it's a lot, you know, it's a lot more that both development and law have to, you know, have to, have to make work. So, yeah, it's, you know, I don't know what else to say about it. Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of extra work, but we're, we're trying to manage it accordingly.
Think about it, also happens, once the contracts are executed, just ensuring compliance, making sure that people are reporting.
That's going to be the biggest.
Because everybody's going to want to see, you know, the council's going to want to see it. What did the ARPA funding that we allocated, what did it do? Right? We want to be able to track that. So that happens later on, once the money's actually being spent. A lot of it's not happening early on, it's just getting the documentation, as Ms. Diott said, and reaching out to the organizations, trying to make sure that, you know, if they have funding contingencies that they haven't lined up, so we have a better sense of, is this project going to move forward? Is it not going to move forward?
Go ahead, please.
I appreciate Ms. Diott's candor. I don't imagine any department head's going to get up there and say we're drowning, and I appreciate it. More definitely comes at a cost, and definitely that that cost is the continued work that you're doing and your ability to do it efficiently and effectively, and that's something that we have to weigh. But for myself, I think whenever you're given, whenever I'm given more tasks, what helps is seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. So I know, Mr. Mayor, you said that you're in the stages of bringing on a consulting service. If you wouldn't mind just clarifying, what stage? Are you vetting applicants? Are you receiving applicants? Where are you currently at, if you don't mind?
I've extended an offer to one person who, to join the planning department staff, anticipate that happening in the next couple of weeks. Again, Mr. Ferrari's telling me that he's able to handle this in the short term. And then depending on, well, I'll say the complexity of some of the contracts, whether we would use some of the consultants that we already have under contract with the engineering department, whether there's, you know, they're building buildings, it's different than its program delivery. And so as we move through this, it's still somewhat fluid in terms of what the actual demand will be and how complex it will be. At this point, we haven't gotten a lot of the information back so that we're able to enter into contracts, even though that is moving forward.
Thank you. Any other concerns?
Well, would it be helpful to have a consultant who's doing the follow up? That's like, like these people who aren't, you know, sitting in their contracts for whatever reason, if they need tax support, would it be helpful for that? I understand what Mr. Colton is saying, that at the end, they're going to need somebody to do with the compliance. But we're, not only are we giving them a timeline, we're also operating on a timeline that this money has to be allocated and then spent by a certain time. So the longer we, it lingers out there, then, you know, we're in jeopardy of not either having it taken back or not being able to spend it in the way that we initially allocated it. So does it make sense now for us to be looking for someone who can actually follow up with people if, if the Department of Development is not, doesn't have the, the staff to do it?
Well, yes, I am looking at that. And so again, depending on the actual contracts that are in place in our workload, that we will staff at an adequate level to make sure that we can appropriately administer those to get the projects done and have compliance and money is expended in a inappropriate manner.
Okay.
Any other concern? Would you like to see this back to weeks?
Please.
What's my opinion? If you can help.
Thank you, Ms. Diott.
The next item is annual permit fee waiver, exterior building review process. Several years ago, we started this program. And this program has been, it's a success story out there in the community. Back of that, in regards to what we're doing. So what I'm looking to, just to, we're looking forward to continue this program in this year. And I have this evening emailed you some of that back of that, since last year, we were able to give back to our community 72,000, two hundred million dollars in total permit fee that was waived for exterior building permit. And that has to do with 90 roof permit, 123 general permit, and 29 tent permit. So I, because of the success we're getting from this program, I would like to move it again this year, give your support, and to continue to give back to our community some people that are, do exterior work on the building. Any questions? All in favor? Any other business or finances?
Yeah, I just want to mention one more thing. We didn't ask Mr. Do little luck to, to speak at all regarding the financial piece of this. Is there anything you want to discuss with us regarding financial piece of the ARPA funding?
Is there any question?
I did have the one question that I sent to you. I did have the one question that I sent to you.
Oh, about the?
Could you come up, please?
What's your state for that?
I'm sorry?
He talks about all the capital city projects, you know, what's going on with those. I can briefly discuss, can you, you have a sheet? So we have three projects on this list that are construction. We have a few that are on the done phase, a few that are on hold, and a few that are pending. But here we know more on the sites, where the project is. But if you're looking at the numbers, what we actually spent in conferences, how much we have left over, I can discuss that with you.
So specifically, when we, when I sent, when you sent it, I asked the email, I was looking through all the.
31 million in Central Park.
I was looking specifically, it said that, I mean, we know that that's the general ground's been broken. We know that's all happened, but the 1 million still sits. So I was wondering how that looks like.
I mean, basically, from what I understand, it's, if there's a short form or if there's another project, that money is allocated towards a certain project within Central Park. But like I said, Chris Wong will probably be the best person to answer that question for here.
So you're saying we allocated, but we didn't spend any of it on the project? Is that what you're saying?
We haven't, it's, it's been allocated, but there hasn't been any actual expenditures coming out of that.
Okay. Okay. I will ask Mr. Wong, because I'm not really clear on how that worked when the actual work has been done. We've seen it been, it's been done, so I'm sure.
Well, what work are you saying is done?
Uh, he's, it was, the way it was described on the information we sent was the general breaking, you know, getting the grounds ready.
For the?
For Central Park.
Yeah, that's coming out of the Central Park allocation.
Right here?
Right over here. So you have the 5.2 and the 4.5. So you have actual 408,617.79. That's actual being spent out of that.
Right. And this is what then?
That, that is just a Central Park. That's just an overall. If there's any other improvements that require.
So there is the walkway, some of the lighting.
I'll, I'll, thank you, Mayor. I'll check in with him as well. Because I just, it just seemed like there was a lot of money that we just hadn't, hadn't expended yet.
Right now, we have, I think you have the breakout sheet that I have. We have 4 million approximately, actual 95 million.
Motion.
I have a question. Has this money been contracted? So with the breakout sheet, I don't know if you have that, the analysis, do you see the codes next to it? Or does CN 97, so on and so forth? Those are the contracts we have. Otherwise, we don't put it in our municipal accounting system.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
I'd like to call the Order of City Development and Planning. We have nine items on the agenda. The first item is just a reminder for the determination of the secret of the environmental significance of resoning parcels between Hamilton's, Connected Strong Streets, and parts of Summit Avenue. And the public hearing will be on May 22. Any questions about that? Okay. I'm taking a motion. Oh, just a reminder. I'm sorry, just a reminder. Yes. Item number two is a reminder of rezoning the parcels between Hamilton's, Connected Strong Streets, and parts of Summit Avenue, Montic Street from R1 to R2. And the public hearing for that will be also on Slide 22. Any questions? Okay. Item number three, an appointment to the Civilian Police Review Board. Mayor McCarthy?
The Police Community Review Board is comprised of members that are, names are submitted from various groups. From their submission, I'm supposed to submit two, I submit names to the council. There is one position that is at my discretion, and forwarding to the council for your consideration, Mr. Mabou's name.
Any questions? Yes.
I have a question, a comment. I just wanted to thank Rose for her years of dedication to this board. I think a lot of people forget that it functions very much with the intent of being an objective voice with respect to how investigations are completed at the police department. Sometimes those conversations can become a little testy, but I appreciate any individual that's willing to volunteer their time to support this process moving forward. And she very much has remained in place. And I would like to publicly just appreciate her, and I look forward to this new individual stepping in and filling that need as well.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm with this.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ceremony resolution for Caribbean National Heritage Month. Mr. Mutu Baron.
Thank you. June is being recognized as a national Caribbean American Heritage Month under the question resolution to recognize their contribution toward our city.
Any questions or comments?
I'm with it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ceremony resolution recognizing Pastor Felicia Collins. Mr. Palamini?
Yes, Pastor Collins has been called to another church. She's served our community very well, and I think it's appropriate to recognize her.
Questions or comments?
I'm with it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number six, a ceremony resolution recognizing Pride Month 2023. There was a request that was sent to us to do a ceremony resolution for that to be presented on June 3 at the event. And so we're putting that forward for resolution. Any questions?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The last three items will be an executive session for property sales. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for re-asse.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're reassessing. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order our government operations, one item on the agenda, and we'll have to go into executive session for this item.
The man, the man.
Can I submit to the council for your approval and then to the collective bargaining agreement? The council has questions. We go into executive session, it'll be some things. It'll just be public information out of, I don't know what the question is.
I'm fine.
And one of the components of this, which we're trying to do across the board, is under the pay system that has existed in the city for as long as people can remember, we pay people before they've actually worked. So you get your paycheck on Thursday for work that we hope they'll do on Friday. Everybody works on Friday very hard. It's been looked at in the audits. It's flagged as an item. And in this, we're looking to eliminate that so that there'll be a lag payroll. So the work you do this week, you will get paid next week. And in that, we're going to give the employees one extra week of pay at the end of the year to balance it out. We have today in the pay system, depending on when the calendar is, individuals end up with a very small paycheck or mid-sized paycheck. Almost never you get a full paycheck. And so it's to balance that out at the end of the year, negotiate it with the union to, again, smooth that out at the end, and then also bring us into compliance, so that we'll have a lag in the payroll, so that it will allow for the elimination of the possibility of somebody getting paid and not actually doing the work.
What's being proposed in the, in what you have before you is for, as it applies right now, I think for new hires, we haven't come to terms yet with, and this is obviously for CSEA, and this is like that to apply at some time in the future for, obviously, all employees, we're subject to collective bargaining. So as it applies now, before the, the new folks coming on board for CSEA. But the anticipation will be that this will eventually apply to everyone. We just have to, obviously, because we've been going through this system for such a long time, figuring out how to exactly get that accomplished, one, and to negotiate an agreement with the unions because it is subject to collective bargaining. So that will come back to the city council at a future point. So this is just for the new hires with CSEA.
So this makes a lot of sense to me. I guess my own question would be, was this something that, you know, what was the function of it, operating the way that it's operating up until this point? Is that just another one of those things that just happened that way because they've been happening that way? Or was there, you know, some thought around this, or does this serve a purpose?
I wish I could tell you. I'm sorry.
It's just as long as, you know, it was put in place 50 years ago, 60 years ago.
One of those things is happening.
The obvious concern is that somebody works, gets paid on Wednesday. That's, some people hits their accounts on a Wednesday. For me, it's a Thursday, but some people actually gets their account on Wednesday. If they're not there on Friday, they would have, as I indicated, gotten paid for a day that they didn't work, which is obviously not ideal, clearly. So to resolve that issue.
So what other contracts? So right now, this is for CSEA, new hires going forward. When would this come up again for other?
This will apply to all, you know, references new employees. It will apply to all CSEA after the first of the year. So after January 1st, or the first pay period is, everybody will be effectively a lag payroll.
Oh.
And we're trying to negotiate it in the other contracts where that is applicable.
So it's not just new hires, it's everyone?
It would be new hires between now and the end of the year. After January 1st, it'll apply to everybody in the CSEA bargaining for this agreement.
Okay. Okay. So, that's not how it's, it's written here.
Attached to this is the MOU.
Any other questions, comments, concerns around this? All in favor?
Aye.
At this point, I'd like to accept a motion to adjourn?
I thought I was a doctor. It's me and.
No.
It's me and.
It's supposed to be cheek sheet.
I write this down, I write this down wrong every week. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. I was like, there's four people in the meeting.
I did second you.
Okay. All in favor?
I mean, it looks fine. Maybe I seconded.
Mr. Colton, I don't have the MOU attached. This is what's in there.
To the back, no.
That's it. The last page.
Last page.
That is it.
This is one said new hires only. What I'm looking for, what he's saying. I don't have, no, I don't have what you're looking at, but it's fine. I'll get it. Okay. I don't have that. Well, he said there's an MOU in the, because that one says just new, new hires. That one says new hires only.
On the, on the comment before, the new hire comment.
It's headline three, all CSE employees receive an extra check so that the employer shall move from a payday payroll to a lag payroll. And that it's all CSE employees. That's effective the last pay period of December 20.
Okay.
23. Even though I'm looking at that, I'm not sure if it's the last pay period, if it's the first pay period.
Didn't pull inside of the discussion, so I was just, wanted to make sure. I'd like to reconvene City Development and Planning. Oh. And then we'll go to executive session. I'd like to reconvene City Development and Planning. The final items are for executive session. So I'd like to ask for a motion to go to executive session.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public will have to leave.